I'd like to call to order the afternoon session of the Board of Supervisors meeting for June 5, 2018. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay. So, we have heard from the County Executive, the District Attorney, Health Services, and Child and Family Adult Services this morning. And before we go into CIP, were there any other comments, questions Board members had for other county departments? Mr. Natoli?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of items, I think, that we all received. The, we did have a request, we didn't cover the, I believe it would be under Department of Human Assistance, for the Sacramento Self-Help Housing Hotline, Renters, the Housing Helpline. It was a request for some additional funding, I don't know, in order magnitude $20,000. We had a letter, so I'd certainly like to have that for discussion this afternoon or whenever we get to that. The other one we all received, and I don't know which category falls under, it was a request from the Splash, Sacramento Splash Program, for some bridge funding for, I believe, $97,000 this year. And I think we all got that letter, I think you did, Mr. Gill. So I don't know how you intend to handle those for purposes of discussion, though.
My suggestion is going to be under Board deliberation. We can report on both of those.
Okay, very good.
That was my plan, yeah.
Okay.
Great. So, then we will have Capital Improvement Plan. Kristin Yates, our Debt Officer.
Good afternoon, Kristin Yates, County Executive's Office. So today, we have for you the final step of approval for the fiscal year 1819 five-year CIP. CIP now includes revisions for the following items. In the Airport section, International Airport, a project title revision for the Director's Operations Center Reconfiguration Design. That should have been Department's Operations Center Reconfiguration Design. So that's project number five. And under Waste Management and Recycling, a revision on the project description for the North Area Recovery Station Equipment Maintenance Facility Project, which is project number 14. The project now includes design and construction to improve the existing facility, rather than the replacement of the facility. So the recommendations for this topic are to accept the Planning Commission's resolution finding that the fiscal year 1819 CIP is consistent with the County General Plan, and to adopt the final fiscal year 201819 five-year CIP as part of the approval process of the recommended budget. One item to note, when we presented the draft CIP, the Board requested report backs related to the county libraries facilities and the Mather Wetlands Preserve. These two report backs will be presented to the Board at a later time. So the Department Directors and Representatives are here to answer any questions pertinent to projects in the CIP, should you have any.
Mr. Natoli.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So just on the last, again, you noted a couple of those items, so at a later time, when would we expect to report back both on libraries and on the Mather Wetlands Preserve? Go ahead.
Well, Leatherman, I'm sorry.
On the library, we are going to be embarking on a master plan that we're working on. Is that the one?
Yes.
So I don't have a timeline for you at this point, but I can get you one. And Jeff, on Mather Preserve?
Jeff Leatherman, Director of Regional Parks. And on the Mather Preserve, we're working on two aspects of that project. One is with the Preserve Manager and looking at the short-term costs associated with site security of those facilities, which we're able to work into our existing operational budget. And we have some reserves in our operational budget coming into this next fiscal year to tackle some of those projects. And then we're also working with economic development on the longer-term endowment strategy, along with County Exec's Office, for the projects that go beyond just the daily operational.
So could we anticipate we'd have something, again, there are environmental documents that are due out for some of the projects along the Jackson Corridor, some of those may come to hearing later, early, late this year, early next year. But I think as relates certainly to the Vernal Pole Preserve, and our strategies for both the short term, as well as midterm and long term, I guess I'd like to see us have an item where we have, you know, maybe develop some strategies, and sort of economic development's a part of that. But that's, it's largely, you know, in the parks realm now, as it should be. And so I guess I'd like to see us have something come back, maybe late summer, early fall, to at least have a.
Let's shoot for fall, and we can refine that date with you.
Okay. I just think it's important. Again, and again, if there's any funding, let me ask Mr. Leatherman, is there, so you've got some things built into your operations this year, they may fit into the CIP. Was there any particular things that aren't being funded that are mission critical out there as it relates to protecting that property?
Not that have been identified by staff or by our Preserve Manager at this time. We've got some new post and cable fencing that we're working on around the property.
In addition to what you did last year.
Correct. Yeah, we've got, as we continue to fix certain encroachment areas, other pieces pop up where people are accessing the Preserve inappropriately. And so we're working between the Rangers and our Preserve Manager to shore those areas up. And we do have those provisions in our budget this year to handle that.
Okay. And I think that as a part of that, and it may not be appropriate for the CIP, but that in talking about the Preserve Management Manager, and I know there's been some work done around that, I think that would be appropriate for that workshop to come back. So I think this Board's fully informed as to the status of Mr. Leatherman, Mr. Leonard, and others have been working on that. So, okay. Thanks. And I just have one other question, if I could, Madam Chair, for on our CIP. So if I'm not mistaken, then the yellow are projects that are added this year, is that right?
That's correct.
And so we nearly doubled the number of projects. There were like 60-some new additions of the 136 identified.
So there were some situations where projects were bundled last year, and departments chose to pull those projects apart and make them individual projects. Outside of that, other than having a department, a specific question regards to a project, and a department representative answer that question.
Okay.
As the CIP started getting funded, a lot of these were conceptual. They had as one project. And as Kristin indicated, as the funding became available, we started implementing or started building them. They broke them into separate capital projects.
Okay. And one question that is probably relevant to the agenda we have tomorrow, which is a report bargain, RCCC, and the, certainly there's a kind of a two-part question there. It relates to the building, the health facilities and so forth, under the grant, and then what we may take off of what was contemplated a year ago. But then I see the CIP, I see a whole lot of things listed there for RCCC, in fact totaling about $15 million in additional items. Some of them relate to facilities that would have been replaced and/or, you know, renovated under that conversation we have tomorrow. So I guess my question is, is that in approving the CIP, these things are needed, but we're still going to have an open discussion before this Board as to what we do with grant monies and that project description. Are we getting ahead of ourselves a bit here by saying that we're, these are now in the CIP, and assuming we're going to fund them out of that versus the discussion we're going to have tomorrow about what we might do under the grant?
So I believe the projects that are in here related to RCCC, many of them are to the existing facilities that are already there. Your discussion tomorrow really is about the new facility that's going to be built with those grant funds.
Okay, but just let me just take a brief moment here, but we're also talking about HVAC and kitchen facilities, roof replacement. Well, yeah, if I take it, there's a kitchen replace makeup air units, replace refrigeration rack. There's a whole grouping here that would have come under that grant otherwise, that, you know, were described a year ago as being $2 million in immediate improvements needed. These only totalled $2 million. And so I guess my question is, is if we approve this, those things are needed to be done. I bet that. But I'm not just saying, I'm not prepared today to say that, you know, to the answer to the question that we're going to talk about tomorrow, I gotta say.
There's the grant question about what we're going to reduce.
Right.
That's the policy question. What's in front of you there is, I'm looking for Jeff Gasaway to assist me on this one, is that those are projects that have been listed in the past that.
Some are new.
Some are new.
A bunch of yellow ones here.
New projects in there. So there is a correlation, but Jeff, can you go through?
Jeff Gasaway, General Services.
Page B6, just.
What was that?
I'm on page B6, if my colleagues were trying to follow.
Right.
B6, B7.
Some of those projects were scheduled to happen, whether we were going to have, to some degree, the new cook-chill kitchen or not. Some of them needed to be done as well for re-therm purposes as well.
Yes.
Refrigeration rack's been on hold pending the new cook-chill kitchen. So it's put back in. Remember, this is just the plan. We're going to adjust this between after proposed budget anyway, as well. So.
Because there's about, about $2.5 million in projects that relate to, some of these been on the list before, boilers and other things out there, but.
And we're actually, I've got those to discuss tomorrow.
Okay. And that was coming out of question, Jeff, was is that by approving the CIP, not that they don't need to be done, but I'm not predetermining, at least for my purposes, the conversation we're going to have tomorrow about how we might fund those things. I guess you could fund them from different pots of money if we chose to.
Yeah, that's correct.
And you might do something different. If you're going to tear down something, build something new, you wouldn't be replacing it, right?
Correct. But the plan all along for the existing kitchen was to keep it going, even though we were building a new cook-chill kitchen. The uses were going to change. So.
So you're going to keep the old facility under the previous scenario? What are we going to do with it?
Some of it would be used for re-therms, and that's where some of the inmates actually go to eat as well. There's a serving line, and some eating facilities is there as well. So.
Okay. All right. Well, again, I didn't want to get ahead of us, Madam Chair, but again, I was curious. This was in the middle of today, so, in the budget, okay.
Any questions on CIP, or Kristin, did you have any further comments on it?
That was all from me.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Supervisor Frost has a question.
Okay.
It's a small question. On the unfunded libraries.
Yes.
There's a library in that section.
Yes.
It's called Orange Vale.
Yes.
And I have a question relating to, in the past, there was always a listing of $5 million potential bond.
Yes.
Money. But it's not listed there now. Did it go away? Or if I go out tomorrow and I find someone that will give, who will donate $5 million, would that $5 million be there? Or is it gone?
Yes. I have it reserved in my FAF budget for you.
Thank you.
So it is there.
You've got a $5 million donor, is that what you said?
That's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
If anyone in the audience knows anyone who's rich, I'm looking to meet them.
You can take a brief recess and get that.
Yeah. Anyone else have any comments before we go back to our presenter? Okay.
Okay. So you'll be approving this item as part of the recommended budget today.
Okay. Okay, we're going to go into public comment now. We've done our best to gather together the speakers on like issues. So we will start with John Foley. Is he here?
I am.
And then after that will be Jack Zwald. Go ahead.
I'm John Foley, Executive Director of Sacramento Self-Help Housing. Just want, I don't want to take much of your time, but just to say that the county provides the lead on the fair housing work that we do, and the other cities have, over the last few years, joined in so that you have, a percentage of the total budget is yours. And in cutting $14,900 out, we lose another $20,000 bucks from the other jurisdictions. So if you could find a way to put it back in, it would sort of be leveraged. And I sent you a letter to describe what we're trying to do. It is an expansion of our service, but we believe it's a significant, you know, effort if we could do that. I understand if you have to draw the line, but just consider it. Thank you.
Before you leave, Supervisor Kennedy has a question.
Yes, Mr. Foley. So this money's leveraged with other funders, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, the cities of Sacramento, Rio Linda, Elk Grove, Citrus Heights, and Rancho Cordova.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Gill. So, I mean, this is a service that actually saves us money in the long run compared to the way we used to do business. At the very least, I'd like to have this considered in the September budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Jack Zwald. I forgot to mention at the beginning, we have a two-minute speaking limit today. Is Jack Zwald not here? Maybe I'm mispronouncing it. On Palmwood Court?
He was here earlier in the morning.
Well, he filled out the Speaker's form, I guess he's not here now.
Right here.
Okay, then we'll go into Social Service. Shaquika Anderson, then Mike Jaskey, Kathy Cresswell.
Hello. Hello, I'm Shaquika Anderson. I love the program that I've been afforded a while back. I recently had a daughter, and I was robbed, so it sent me into premature labor. And I wasn't really ready. I didn't have the knowledge to be able to take care of a baby that size with that many needs. And I was afforded the opportunity to bridge the gap between the lack of knowledge of how to deal with children properly, how to raise a child.
Excuse me, which program are you referring to?
Birth and Beyond.
Okay, thank you.
And I, this program has been very beneficial for me because me being a veteran, I've, I haven't had a lot of opportunities to, you know, been able to branch out because so many opportunities are kind of locked. And it's a long progress. But for me, this was like a quick process. They got me in, they got me all the help I needed. They were able to, you know, help me. And it's, it's a warm environment to know that you go into a place, and any question that you have as far as your children, as far as like your personality, like they're there to help you. And it's not just my home visitor, it's the whole Birth and Beyond community itself. Because I've been to multiple events where they're calling me out by name. And that makes me feel good to know that I have people on my side that's willing to help me to be able to raise, you know, successful children in our community to grow up and be anything that they can be. So I just, you know, would appreciate the opportunity to continue the program.
Ms. Anderson.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Serna.
I have a question for the Speaker. Which Family Resource Center?
Valley High.
Valley High, okay, thank you.
Mike Jaskey, then Kathy Cresswell, and Ruth. Oh, Mr. Serna, have you already spoken?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy. Just a second, Mr. Jaskey.
Before, just for executive staff, before there's a parade of people getting up for Birth and Beyond, can you give us a status update as far as where that is, and where the request is, and where it's going?
Supervisor Bruce Whitestaff.
Take it somewhere.
Deputy County Executive for Social Services. The question that came up this morning, and that's come up prior to the budget hearings, is how we might bridge this period of time between now and the time that more additional funding might come in. Birth and Beyond has identified an amount of $650,000 that would represent that period of time to keep things going until then. At which point in time, as we said this morning, there's the possibility of some state funding through the CalWorks program for home visiting, as well as some federal dollars. So their amount is 650 for that purpose.
So there.
So they're, they're whole as far as their request goes?
That's the total amount of their request.
Right, yeah, okay. Just maybe you can shorten the day if we get that out there now. Thank you.
Mr. Jaskey.
Good afternoon, Chair Peters, members of the board. For the record, my name is Mike Jaskey, speaking on behalf of Sacramento Act. This afternoon, I'd like to focus on the programs and activities that provide housing and support services to homeless people in your proposed budget. Although DHA staff assure me the proposed budget continues the programs and activities of the current year, it's really hard to understand that from the budget documents themselves. That was stated this morning by Mr. Ferguson, but one cannot really tell that from the formal documents. Homelessness is a critical issue in our cities and the unincorporated area of the county. The public needs to understand what it is the county's programs and activities are that are devoted to this topic, what it will take to make a big reduction in the numbers of people who are homeless, and how long that's going to take. We have long advocated that the county, city, and Sacramento steps forward, work together to develop a plan that will end homeless or sharply reduce its incidence, educating the public about what it will take to accomplish these goals, an important activity. So please help lay the groundwork for this outcome by requesting that your staff develop and publicly distribute a comprehensive enumeration of all of the program activities that are connected to homelessness, what their funding levels have been, and what they are in the proposed budget, and let that be available in August prior to the final budget hearings. Our homeless brothers and sisters need our collective support to escape from their desperate condition. The faith community and charity can't do this alone. As the level of local government closest to the people, you need to find a way to identify the resources and activities necessary to bring an end to homelessness in our community. Faith community wants to help, but we need your ongoing leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaskey. Kathy Cresswell, then Ruth Sonda, Jonathan Portius.
Good afternoon, Chair Peters and Supervisors. My name is Kathy Cresswell, and I'm representing the Sacramento Housing Alliance this afternoon. I want to thank you for your continued commitment to your homeless initiatives. Sacramento continues to face a housing catastrophe. Every $100 increase in rent results in 15% to 30% increase in homelessness. Lowest-income renters in Sacramento are paying more than 60% of their income towards rent, and we are currently, have a shortfall of over 58,000 affordable rental units just to meet the current demand. So we know we have a crisis. We are asking that you permanently designate the former redevelopment funds, now called boomerang funds, into a special account, so that they would go directly into a special account, that they would be used for affordable housing and homeless purposes. As the agencies wind down, as the redevelopment agency winds down, that pot of funds is only going to get bigger and should be designated for the purposes for which it was used previously. It is critical now to designate those funds for affordable housing, because in November, there's an affordable housing bond that is going to be on the ballot. All indications are, it's likely to pass. But those funds are designated by the state on a competitive basis, and so Sacramento needs affordable housing funds for leverage. The local boomerang funds could be the leverage that is needed to help make sure we get our fair share of those state affordable housing bonds. And those funds are going to be available as early as spring of 2019. They're going into existing programs, so there won't be a delay. That money will be available. We need to make sure we have the resources for matching funds and to leverage, so that Sacramento gets its share of the resources. Budgets are really a reflection of values and priorities, and so we are asking...
Wind up your comments, please.
We are asking that you prioritize the most vulnerable in our community, both homeless and funds for affordable housing, by designating the boomerang funds for affordable housing. Thank you.
Ruth Sonda, Jonathan Portius, then Richard Dana.
Buenas tardes, yo vengo en apoyo a...
Good afternoon. I'm here to help and support for North Sacramento Family Resource Center, Birth and Beyond.
Could you tell us your name, please?
Ruth, Ruth Sonda.
My name is Ruth Sorna.
Thank you.
Bueno, a mi este centro me ha apoyado como mama primeriza.
This center has helped me greatly as a first-time mom.
Con los programas de clases de crianza con cariño.
With classes such as caring for kids.
Que me han ayudado a tratar de educar a mi hijo.
To help me educate my new child.
Nos cambió la vida a mi familia por...
It has changed my family's life.
Porque conocimos a más, a más, este, familias de la comunidad que están ahí en este centro.
Because we have learned about and have worked with new families from the different areas and within our center.
Donde podemos compartir experiencias y anécdotas para favorecer el desarrollo de nuestros hijos.
Where we can learn and share different tactics to be able to teach our kids and different parenting skills.
Este centro también cuenta con el servicio de transportación, el cual nos, yo no tengo carro, y me ayuda a llevar a mi hijo a sus citas pediátricas.
In addition, this program has been useful as it allows transportation. Since I do not have transportation, the service has allowed transportation to allow me to be able to take my son to pediatric appointments and prenatal care appointments.
Tenemos poco tiempo para expresar, pero en general, a mí, este, ha sido una gran ayuda, y gracias a eso, yo también puedo compartir y referir a personas de mi misma, este, necesidades, al centro donde ellos nos apoyan.
In short, I just wanted to thank you, and to let you guys know that this is very much appreciative, and we are able to give this information to other families and have families come in so that they could take advantage of the resources that are offered in this center as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jonathan Portius, Richard Dana, Gordon Richardson.
I'm Jonathan Portius. I'm the CEO of Wellspace Health. I'm here today, gosh, when I walk over here, I wonder what I'm here for, because there are so many important items that we're involved with, but I'm here today to support the Birth and Beyond program. We are one of nine sites in a 17, almost 18-year partnership now. We are requesting bridge funding in support of this program. It is a, it's a best-in-class upstream program for child abuse prevention, linked to family resource centers and home visitation. I, as a clinical psychologist, have worked in a number of places where I've seen a wide variety of interventions for families. The linkage between us, the community, Child Protective Services, the clinical community is staggering, and there is no other place I've seen in the country where there's a program like this. So whatever you can do to support our one-time request for this bridge funding, we'd be very grateful. Thanks.
Thank you. Richard Dana, then Gordon Richardson.
Richard Dana with the Mutual Assistance Network, and also the Chair of the Birth and Beyond Collaboration, and Supervisor Kennedy. This will be the last speaker for Birth and Beyond today. Let me just, to do this instead, and say, we do have a lot of supporters here, so I'm going to ask them to stand, those who are here to support Birth and Beyond today. Thank you. I have a feeling if Michelle was able to, she would have stood too, though, right? So just to reiterate what Mr. Wagstaff said, yeah, we are, we are requesting $650,000 in bridge money. That's the money that would get us from July, or excuse me, yeah, July 1st through December 31st, which time we'll be able to apply for state funds that are coming in. We're also applying for Healthy Families America affiliation, which will allow us to attract other federal funds. We already maximize our dollars tremendously through MA dollars, which comes in through the federal, through federal designation, and with AmeriCorps, along with other funding sources. So the entire package will allow us to stay whole, $650,000, so that we don't have to decrease in size at each site and then have to rebuild, which is one of the hardest things to do. So our request today is that. Appreciate it very much.
So, Mr. Dana, if I understood you correctly, it's a bridge loan, so the idea would be you would pay it back when the state money comes in?
No.
Not a loan.
Thank you, let me reiterate that. It's bridge funding, so we would ask for your, your funding, not a loan. We do not believe that...
Probably have to take the bridge out of that, then.
Fair. We're going to ask for funding of $650,000. And I should also say, we know that you're continuing funding from last year, and we really appreciate that very much as well. Thanks, Richard.
Thank you. Gordon Richardson, then Leani Kobian, and then Alani Abelier Mateo.
Good afternoon, Chair Peters, board members. My name is Gordon Richardson. I'm the Regional Executive Director of Uplift Families, Family Services. We're a children's mental health and behavioral health, as well as child welfare organization here in Sacramento. Here to speak to the Department of Health's budget item, specifically the recommended 2% increase in children's providers, which I understand amounts to about $1.4 million. Over the past few years, most recently in April, healthcare providers have met with board members and their staff to express our concerns about the impact of years of frozen rates, despite rapidly increasing costs for providers. We appreciate the recommendation by the department to increase our rates by 2%, but 2% falls short of the level of intervention necessary to restore services and working conditions in our agencies. As explained in previous meetings, the current rates are at least 24% below where they should be. Funds allocated to Sacramento by the state have been rising. The rates paid to Sacramento for the services have been rising, and this has been happening without commensurate increases to the rates paid to providers. We also recommended that the county adopt some type of annual formula to address increasing costs. We recommended that the county implement a neutral index to address the increasing costs year over year. Given the rates have been frozen for years, we feel justified in asking for a system that will address rising costs of providing services on a more routine basis. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you.
Thank you. She's here to support Birth and Beyond. Then Alani Abelier Mateo. I'm sorry if I mispronounced the name. Pencil on the dark green is hard to read.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Peters, members of the board. My name is Elaine Abelier Mateo. I'm here representing the Health Access Action Team, which is a coalition of over 60 different nonprofit organizations, health advocate groups, med students, and we're here today to first thank this board for making the decision earlier this year to increase the Healthy Partners Program enrollment numbers from 3,000 to 4,000, and to approve a pilot to phase in participants 65 years or older. But in addition, we want to strongly recommend that the board consider lifting the cap, the enrollment cap entirely. Many other county programs basically allocate a set budget and serve as many people as that budget will allow, and we are imploring this board to consider that the Healthy Partners Program be no different. And so to lift that cap would be very helpful for the community members that we all serve. Secondly, we're asking that the pilot to increase the age limit from 65 to 65-plus. We're asking that that pilot essentially be granted, that we completely lift and permanently end the discriminatory age cap, because it's really helped a number of the families that are advocates and community members have served. Lastly, there were about 25 other folks here this morning who would have testified in support, but unfortunately, they did have to leave. They were made up of medical students and nonprofit providers, and I just want to also lift up that we had other folks here in support. And my last comment is, we are also here in support of keeping the ICE contract out of Sacramento County. Thank you.
Diana White, and Erin Johansson, and Jack Zwald.
Hi, I'm Diana White with Trainpoint Community Program, speaking on behalf of the Association of Behavioral Health Contractors. We wanted to provide our endorsement for the increase that the Division of Behavioral Health is requesting for behavioral health contractors in the community. As you've previously heard from us, community mental health services have really struggled to hire and retain staff, because the pays are so low, and we have staff working multiple jobs and at times losing their own housing in the process. Obviously, this is going to have a huge impact on the quality of care they're able to provide to the individuals that they're privileged to serve. So we request your endorsement of that as well. The Association also requests that the, if, and if it's passed, that the additional funds be a true COLA and not tied to the provision of additional services, which requires additional staff, which kind of wipes out the purpose of a COLA. Additionally, we would really like to see a fair process established going forward to address rising costs of services as they happen. We don't feel it makes a lot of sense to put really wonderful, responsive, community-based services in place only to see them degrade over time and not fulfill the missions they were set out to fulfill, because costs rise and their budgets remain flat. So, thank you for your consideration of those items.
Thank you, Ms. White. Erin Johansson, then Jack Zwald.
Good afternoon, Supervisors, Madam Chair. I'm also here, I'm Erin Johansson, I'm Executive Director at TLCS. I'm also here to support the recommendation for the 2% cost of living increase for the contractors, and I want to echo what Gordon and Diana have said about the staff that work in these programs, who are committed and do their, the services for this population because they love it. But I have right now three staff who are homeless, and they are homeless because of rising rents and because their pay has not kept up with, with the rising cost of living in this community. So I would ask that not only you consider what both Gordon and Diana have talked about as making this a true cost of living without services, an increase in services attached, and a fair process going forward where we can have true cost of living considered for the services that we provide. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Zwald.
Good afternoon, Jack Zwald. I serve as the Vice Chair of the County's Public Health Advisory Board. I'm here today to speak in favor of an initiative supervisor not totally mentioned this morning, $25,000 one-time to support the reopening of reproductive health services and sex health services at the Sacramento City College Campus and the Consumus River College Campus. This would provide one day a week of nurse practitioner providing needed reproductive health services, especially given the county's rising rates of sexual transmitted infection. Notably, in 2016, the county had over 10,000 cases of chlamydia, 79% of which were in the 15 to 24 age range. About 60% of the students at SacCity, for example, are in that age range. The challenge is that there's a lack of qualified providers. California has a workforce shortage in the healthcare industry, whether that be physicians, nurses, across the board. The county has the ability and the infrastructure to provide these services. We're talking about tens of thousands of students who work, 39% of whom work 20 hours, 40 hours plus a week, who need tangible, convenient access to care. Jeff Christian, a nurse over at SacCity, wanted to be here this morning. He shared with me some statistics. I might forge your office after this. He was also in support. So in the future, while this is one-time funding, the district is considering passing a health fee. The district is one of, about a third of California community college districts without a fee to support ongoing health services. So this would be for 2018, 19, and hopefully in the future, the county could work with the district to provide these services in the long run, along with mental health services, which is the impetus for passing this fee. So this is, this is the beginning of what could be a fantastic partnership between the county to address health needs and, you know, protect our youth. So I urge your support. Thank you.
Could you wait for a minute? Mr. Kennedy would like to talk to you.
Yes.
So this is the subject that you and I talked about...
So, this is the subject that you and I talked about earlier.
Correct.
Okay. We're gonna just take it off the budget issue right now, because I'm going to dedicate the funding out of discretionary funds from District 2 to cover that, and I've already talked with the President of SacCity College about it.
That's tremendous. Thank you.
You can go home now.
Yeah.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. You got any more money over there?
We need about a million dollars if you-
Five million down in the end. Okay, then, it looks like that's all the speakers on the general budget. We'll go to the ICE contract, the Item 4 on the consent calendar. Rosa Barrientos, then Wade Brennelson, and Alexander Gonzalez. Is Rosa here?
Yeah, coming.
Oh, okay, sorry. Reminder that we have a two-minute limit. We wanna hear, hear from everybody today, so help us do that, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Rosa, and I work for the California Dream Network, the largest network of undocumented students, and we have a large population here in Sacramento. Sacramento State SacCity is one of the campuses that we work very closely with students, and for the past years at SacState, we've worked really hard to ensure that students have a safe space, specifically undocumented students, because of the trauma that we carry, because we know what it's like to hear a bang on the door and know that ICE is coming. And doing this contract is a reminder of the trauma that we carry. It's a reminder of the work that we've been doing to ensure that we are safe, that, that we are, even though we're struggling, we're surviving in this administration. And what you are doing to us by continuing this contract is saying-
Rosa, Rosa, if you would not put the microphone so close to your mouth, we could understand you a little-
Sorry, I'm just so upset that Sacramento County would consider, sorry, would consider continuing this contract, knowing damn well, excuse my language, knowing damn well the trauma that we carry, knowing that we are struggling day by day, knowing and fearing that our parents or even us may be detained, knowing that we, that we may be separated, knowing that there's a jail down the street from where we go to school. What does that say? What does that say to that trauma? What does it say to our experiences? It says that Sacramento County endorses family separation, and we will not stand by that. We are here to protect our families, and we are here to say that, no, we do not want this, not here in the county that we call home.
Thank you. Wade Brennelson, then Alexander Gonzalez, then Elizabeth Kim.
I think they got the cards confused. My name is Wade Brennelson. I'm here as a representative of Laura's Law Campaign for Assisted Outpatient Treatment. Would you like me to continue, or-
Oh, yes, that's fine.
Okay. AOT in Sacramento County. We represent 45 people who signed our petitions. Members of our group have met with virtually all of you individually, as well as Ms. Uma Zikowski. We thank you for listening to us. We did present our proposal regarding Laura's Law and AOT at the Mental Health Board Public Hearing, and even though you have included increases in mental health funds, you've not included Laura's Law or AOT funds in this budget. So, this afternoon, I wanna make two quick points. Number one, first, Sacramento County does not have any program that addresses non-conserved people with serious mental illness who have anosognosia. That is, people who do not have insight into their condition. For example, my son is one of the 50% of those with schizophrenia who have this condition. Also, 40% of those with bipolar conditions have anosognosia. So, Sacramento County is missing hundreds, if not thousands, of people who are not conserved. The only program that does serve some of them is CARES Plus, but that program only serves 40 of the approximately 250 conserved individuals. My second point is that four counties, Orange, San Francisco, San Mateo, and Yolo, report that they are implementing AOT more efficiently and effectively by emphasizing outreach and engagement. They are getting substantially more people to voluntarily agree to AOT services prior to the court-related activities. This process has served more people at a lower cost. I'm gonna give you one example of such a county. Orange County is serving 140 people in a year through the outreach and engagement approach, and 33 people through the court process. I'm not going to mention the other three counties, but they're-
Could you wind up your comments, please?
Yes, I will. In summary, if you included AOT in your budget, you would serve hundreds of people with serious mental illness with preventive, early intervention, and wraparound services. My son's case, he lost three and a half years of his life after his first year of college, when he began exhibiting his mental illness. Only after being homeless for three months, in jail for a year, in SMIC for a year, including being conserved, he is now again succeeding in college. If this county had adopted AOT and Laura's Law, he and his family did not need to suffer. Please include Laura's Law in your budget and stop this unnecessary suffering for my son and hundreds of others. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Kennedy has a question for you.
Actually, no, I don't. I'd like if Ms. Zikowski would come to the podium, that would be great. Thank you. So, we've had an opportunity to meet with the Speaker and as well as some others on this particular subject, and we've agreed to look at, because we can, you know, agree to disagree, not you and me, but other people, on whether or not Laura's Law is the silver bullet that some people think it is, and that perhaps for Sacramento County, another solution is more appropriate and probably more effective. CARE Plus, we have acknowledged, maybe could be tweaked, could be, you know, we could, we could refine it. It's a work in progress. Are, are we committed to meeting with the interested people who are interested in, in AOT to address this and maybe see how we can work together as a community to make CARE Plus even more effective than it is?
Yes, Supervisor Kennedy, we have had several meetings to date with both Mr. Brennelson and some of the other family members, who have expressed their support for Laura's Law in our community, and we're in the process of having multiple discussions to see what, what we can do within the parameters that we have currently, whether it's looking at CARE Plus, whether it's looking at other ways of addressing the same questions that they're raising. So, we are underway doing some, having some conversations with the individuals who both spoke at the public hearing and as well since then. So, we have several meetings that we're in the process of working through.
All right, then allow me to encourage you to continue to do that. Thank you.
Alexander Gonzalez, Elizabeth Kim, and then Jereth Rodriguez.
So, well, it was supposed to be good morning, but good evening, friends and foes. My name is Alex. I am a student and community organizer here in the Sacramento County. I am here today standing in solidarity with all my undocumented family and those who remain incarcerated in concentration camps to what we know as detention centers. I am here speaking out against action item number four, a contract that brings in $80 million in profit over the eradication, the suffering, and separation of our undocumented community. In fact, throughout the nation, ACLU and other organizations have exposed these inhumane practices in these detention centers. Even here locally, we have discovered the horrific conditions at RCCC. For example, we have acquired some complaints from the inside of detention centers, and I'm just gonna give three examples on some of the complaints that we have received. One is that the showers have been a constant problem with pesticides in the shower walls. Some of the showers have no pressure, no curtains. People inside those walls makeshift curtains but are constantly removed by deputies. The drains do not work, causing the bathrooms to flood. In fact, there are no mirrors, other than metal mirrors, which are all scratched up with no point in being used. Second of all, the count schedule makes this impossible for people to sleep. Deputies do bed checks every hour during the night and slamming the metal doors each time waking up. The lights are also left on at night. People put up towels to block the lights, but these are also torn down by deputies. Number four, food bowls are usually often dirty, and food usually just remains prior to meals. The ice bucket often has even film in it. Food portions are uneven. People are treated with poor dietary, yet they don't even get clean bowls. These practices goes to show that ICE does not care about our community. People are removed from their families and they are convicted due to misdemeanors or most likely just being around during an ICE raid. Remember, human beings such as Claudia Gomez Gonzalez, who died at the hands of Border Patrol agents, and Roxana Hernandez, who died in ICE custody, continue to pass away in the hands of ICE. Overall, how is it that ICE wants to renew a contract but continues to use these tactics to dehumanize our undocumented community? Is this what Sacramento wants to represent? Are these practices your moral values? I want you to really think, do you really want to be covered in the blood of the, of the people who continue to die in the hands of ICE custody? Because we don't. We've had enough. Do not renew this contract, because if you do, the blood will be in your hands. We ask you, do not renew, but conclude and include asylum for undocumented who remain as a prigtag. They are not for sale. They deserve to be with their families as much as you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Kim, then Jereth Rodriguez, and Annette Rose. Is Elizabeth Kim here? Elizabeth Kim. Okay, then we'll go on to Jereth Rodriguez. Is Jereth here?
Good afternoon, my name is Nicole Kravitz-Wertz. I'm here to read a statement on behalf of Janeth Rodriguez. Janeth is the president of the Latino Democratic Club. LDC is a progressive club whose mission includes getting Latinos civically engaged in Sacramento County. Over the past year, we have observed how the Sheriff's Department continually avoids any accountability by not responding thoroughly to any of the requests for information about the current status of the detention of immigrants in our community. In 2015, the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement Office of Professional Responsibility, Office of Detention Oversight, conducted a compliance inspection of the Rio Consonus Correctional Center detention facility to determine its compliance with applicable federal standards. Of the 16 standards used to conduct the RCCC was found to be compliant with only one. Let me repeat that. Of the 16 standards used to conduct the audit, RCCC was found to be compliant with only one. I'd like to delineate all the attempts to get information from the Sheriff's Department regarding the individuals being held at RCCC by ICE. In July 2017, Step Up Sacramento filed an initial Public Records Act request with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. A response acknowledging the receipt of the PRA was received within the 10-day window allowed by law. On October 5th, Step Up received a follow-up, asking them to, quote, "narrow the scope of the initial request," end quote. A revised request was then submitted. On October 25th, 2017, a response to the revised PRA was received. It provided little or no information, redirecting us back to ICE. In most instances, the responses provided stated that, quote, "no responsive data was available," end quote. On November 28th, 2017, Step Up representatives met with Supervisor Kennedy to inform him that there was a lack of response from the Sheriff's Office and that our opposition to renewing the ICE contract should be noted. It is not clear why the Sheriff's Department has been unresponsive about the information relating to who is being detained, how long they are being detained, and under what conditions at RCCC. This does not seem typical of a Sheriff's Department who last March held a community forum on immigration with then-acting ICE Director Thomas Homan, the main purpose of which was to, quote, "turn the tide of SB 54," plus provide a direct line of communication from law enforcement and ICE to the communities.
Could you please wind up your comments?
Yes. So, today, I ask you, as representatives of the community who lives in this county, whether you want to continue to support a department that has been unresponsive to the requests of its citizens, and I ask you, on behalf of Janeth and as well of myself personally, not to renew the contract that the Sheriff's Office has with ICE. Thank you.
Thank you. Annette Rose, then Louise Mailer. Pretty sure that says Annette Rose on John Young Street. And Louise Mailer, then Dr. Rhonda Rios-Kravitz.
Good afternoon, and thank you for your kind attention. I'm Louise Mailer, I'm with ACLU and Amnesty International. And like all my fellow volunteers, I would really very much prefer that undocumented people be managed in a way that was more humane and less costly than incarceration, but since that doesn't seem to be in the cards, I will fall back on my public health background and try to minimize the harm. And when I started looking at that, I was really quite shocked, not Casablanca shocked, but genuinely taken aback to learn what we just heard, that the RCCC center had failed 15 out of 16 counts and yet was considered adequate, and that included seven standards related to environmental health and safety and six related to medical care. There were also some comments on the use of force policies that really made me wonder. But as a citizen, a taxpayer, and whose name this facility is administered, I want to urge you just as strongly as I can not to extend this contract without provision for independent and effective oversight to assure us all that the facility operates as humanely as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Rhonda Rios-Kravitz, then Mariana Rivera, and then Miguel Cordova.
Good afternoon, Chair Peters and members of the board. My name is Dr. Rhonda Rios-Kravitz, and I'm representing Step Up. ICE does not have the authority to incarcerate immigrants. Instead, its authority is limited to holding non-citizens during the adjudication and removal process. RCCC was built and operates as a jail. ICE uses correctional incarceration standards, which impose more restrictions and carry more costs than are necessary to effectively manage detainees. One symptom of our broken immigration system is the exorbitant spending on detaining immigrants annually. Physical detention, which is costly and severe, could be reduced by only holding immigrants whose release would pose a danger to the community. Millions of dollars could be saved if the county reduced its over-reliance on detention and properly allocated resources towards more humane and cost-effective alternative methods of monitoring. Estimates from the Department of Homeland Security show that the cost of these alternatives can range from 70 cents to $17 per person per day. Compare these costs to the sheriff who receives $100 per day per person. The sheriff also stated that without the contract, the net county cost would rise by 6.6 million. However, the sheriff has not provided a comprehensive analysis of the detention cost, as well as projected future costs. He has not divided out the cost for the detention of detainees from the cost to house convicted individuals serving time. He has not analyzed what costs would be if less restrictive detention strategies for noncriminal and nonviolent detainees were used, and he has not provided any analysis of the cost should an alternatives to detention program or ATD be implemented. It has been demonstrated that ATD programs cost far less than detention and are far more humane. They are also extremely effective at ensuring compliance. ATD programs include release, unrecognition, community support, and bond. Given these alternatives, the dollars spent to detain immigrants in the county do not add up to something that makes sense. Finally, the sheriff also stated if the contract was not approved, detainees would be moved out of state, most likely to Texas, with any, out any justification for this draconian move with increased transportation cost.
Could you please wind up your comments?
The detention centers in Texas have been severely criticized for their human rights violations. Has he forgotten that there are detention centers in California, and is he using this as an example, as a scare tactic? We strongly encourage you not to renew this ICE contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Mariana Rivera, Miguel Cordova, and Christopher Sanchez.
Good afternoon. My name is Mariana Rivera, and I'm a member of the Coalition of Labor Union Women, and we actually turned in a letter to you, but I'm gonna sum it up. Basically, we're opposed to any extension of the ICE contract to lease, for, and we really believe that the county shouldn't be in the business of assisting ICE in its work. We hope that you'll be smart about this. You know, the, the hate and the, that's, I believe that the administration is causing right now- You know, the hate and that's, I believe that the administration is causing right now. It's scary for our community. And collaborating with ICE, I don't know if any of you were at the meeting when we met the ICE Director Homan together with Sheriff Jones, and there was a lot of resentment in our community to what's going on and that collaboration, and I think it's a really smart decision to just end it. It won't hurt the county, and it would really make the undocumented community feel a little more safe. I know the city went about trying to create a sanctuary space. I believe the county should do the same thing, and I hope you read our letter in detail. And, you know, I believe in ICE out of Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Miguel Cordova. Christopher Sanchez. And Susan Lang.
Good afternoon. My name is Miguel Cordova. I live in District 5. I am here today representing Sacramento Immigration Coalition. Our organization unifies organizations to increase our presence in the Sacramento area for the purpose of fighting for immigrant rights. We believe in the importance of ensuring our neighbors' rights to feel safe and secure and the right to pursue a productive life. This is why we write to you today. In Sacramento, we believe in standing up for our neighbor. We don't seek to strike fear, harass, nor force people to live in the shadows. That is not Sacramento. Which is why when Immigration and Customs Enforcement, otherwise known as ICE, threatened to raid homes, work sites, and communities, Sac City Unified School District responded with their safe haven policy. Sac City Unified sent a message that in this district, all students will be reassured. They will be able to trust, play, study, learn, and dream. And when Sacramento City USD stood up, others followed with similar resolutions in this region, including Twin Rivers Unified School District, Natomas Unified School District, and Los Rios Community College District. Sac City Council responded by updating their sanctuary city policy and worked to find funds to provide legal support, training of Sacramento to know their rights, our immigrant neighbors' rights, and to defend them. We are certain that this was not easy, but budgets are moral documents that lay out priorities, and they prioritize their city, all of their city. Just as Congregation Benay Israel prioritized human life and became a sanctuary synagogue, how could a place of worship exist and not provide refuge or safe haven? Not in Sacramento. We are here today to ask you to represent Sacramento in its truest form. We don't believe that renting out beds to divide families, target immigrant communities, create fear, and force people to live in the shadows is how we do things in Sacramento. We do not believe that budgets should be balanced by ensuring that beds will remain for the use of ICE. We do not balance budgets with the most vulnerable lives in our communities. Don't let the county supervisors be that outlier here in Sacramento. It's not how we do things in Sacramento.
Thank you.
I have letters.
If you give it to our clerk, that'd be great. Christopher Sanchez. And Susan Lang.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Christopher Sanchez. I'm a policy advocate with CHIRLA, the Coalition for Human and Immigrant Rights. We represent directly immigrant families in the county and the city, predominantly organizing the youth and then their families after that. We're here in opposition, of course, to the ICE contract here in Sacramento for many of the reasons that were mentioned already by many of my colleagues, but to really highlight some of the causes. The lack of transparency at this facility that was conducted by the Department of Homeland Security, so its own entity which oversees this type of facility, has shown that there is a lack of real human rights at this specific site. But the other thing I would say is that here in Sacramento, a lot of families do have hesitation and really want to know what the county message is to folks. We know that through the executive orders the President has written, anyone is a priority if you're undocumented. You could be working in the fields and be a priority. You can be a person who has no criminal history and be a priority. Or you can be a person with a very minor offense, such as minor drug possession from 10 years ago, and be considered a priority. And we know this to be fact through the work that we've done through our deportation defense in Southern California, but also with our partners here in Northern California as well. So for these reasons, we ask for your consideration not to support the contract with ICE. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Susan Lang. Then Dr. Rita Cepeda. Then Mario Galvan.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am Susan Lang, a resident and homeowner in Elk Grove. I'm the coordinator of a community visitation volunteer group for the people in immigration detention at the Rio Consunuas Correctional Center for the past five years, and I'm here to ask you not to renew the contract with ICE. It is important to remember that the people in immigration detention are in civil proceedings. By housing them in county jails, they are treated as prisoners. They are not prisoners. However, as prisoners, they must deal with the punitive and dehumanizing conditions at RCCC. They are no longer criminals serving sentences, but they are subjected to the same treatment. This is done because it is a county jail. They are treated as the general population is treated, but without any of the advantages of a system which is supposed to rehabilitate people. I would like to also address an argument that if RCCC were to close, people from the area would be housed far from family and friends. I would like to let you know this is not true. First of all, the people at RCCC rarely have visitors. Of the 46 people I have visited, four had visitors other than from our group. Second of all, very few of the people at RCCC are from the Sacramento area. Of those I have visited, five came from the Sacramento area. Thirdly, the visitation procedure at RCCC is so bad, it discourages visitations. Immigration detention as a system is wrong. It dehumanizes and causes suffering. There are better ways. We do not want immigration detention in our community, not because of the people housed there, but because the system is wrong. Please end the contract.
Thank you. Dr. Rita Cepeda. Mario Galvan. And Victor Rivera.
Good afternoon, Chair Peters, members of the board. My name is Rita Cepeda, and I am represented on this board by Supervisor Kennedy. Over the years, in difficult times as an immigrant, naturalized citizen, educator, and advocate for human rights, when I feel a sense of desperation as I do now, I am inspired by the words of Margaret Mead. Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed people can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has. By now, you have no doubt been exposed to the litany of human rights violations and atrocities attributed to ICE. You must have seen the postings of immigrant mothers separated from their children of rape, illness, child abuse, and even death linked to the actions attributed to ICE. On April 26th, even Wagner Acting Assistant Secretary at HHS Administration for Children and Families reported to members of Congress that the agency had lost track of 1,500 children. Imagine if one of those were yours. You might say in response, what does that have to do with the Sacramento Sheriff Office ICE contract? We say, your approval and moral consent will make you and our Sacramento County complicit with an immigration policy fraught with brutality, racism, and disgrace. As to the agreement or the comment that sometimes is made, after all, Sheriff Jones is an independently elected official, and that little can be done by this board to impact his policies and procedures. To this, we say what I have learned in 18 years of experience as an executive dealing with a board, that budget is policy. You, as a governing board, cannot distance yourself from the practices, policies, and transgressions of the Sheriff's Office. For today, you are being asked to sign off, as you know, on resources for continuation. By the way, it says indefinite continuation of the grant.
Could you wind up your comments, please?
Yes. Today, you are that small group that Margaret Mead spoke of. We ask you to be humane, thoughtful, but above all, be moral. Thank you.
Thank you. Mario Galvan. I'm not sure the first name.
Good afternoon. My name is Mario Galvan, and I am here as a member of the Zapatista Solidarity Coalition, which is a partner in the Sacramento Immigration Coalition. And I'm here to speak against the ICE contract. We Americans, I think, often have a tendency to be a little self-centered in that we can see, well, what's happening close to us and what affects us, but we don't sometimes notice what's happening to others farther away. We see immigration as a problem for us, but I'd like to suggest that this is really part of something much larger, and it's out of our specter, our field of vision. What we're actually doing is we're criminalizing victims of United States foreign economic and foreign policy around the world. The history of U.S. intervention goes way back, and it can be political, economic, or military behavior toward other countries. We've overthrown democratic governments. We've supported brutal dictatorships, all to win favorable deals for our U.S. businesses around the world. And those advantages for us have come at a tremendous cost for millions of other people around the world. Interestingly, when we intervene in other countries, whether overtly or covertly, all of those, I was tempted to use the word, all those invasions are somehow legal. But when people escape from those countries from the consequences of our actions in those countries, and they cross into our country, we see that as illegal, and we want to punish them. We look back in amazement at the good Germans in World War II who didn't see the atrocities happening right around them. And are we becoming good Americans today? The nightmare in Germany started small with hate crimes and rallies against immigrants and minorities.
Could you please wind up your comments?
Yes, thank you. It ended up in deportations, death camps, and a horrible war. I fear that today, our country is taking the first steps down that same road. And today, I think you have the power to step back from that path by voting not to renew the ICE contract. Thank you.
Victor Rivera. And I think it's Carlos Montez Ponce.
Good afternoon. I'm Victor Rivera with Zapatista Solidarity Coalition. Also, I've been activist on immigration right for half of my life, I guess. I'm here just, and I'm going to be brief, you know, just to, I want to express my opposition and for you guys to, to any contact with ICE. Since the new administration, have been terrorizing our community. We live in very dark ages, I would say, dark times, because there's terrorism all around, and ICE is part of this terrorism. I would say, you know, ICE is a terrorist organization too. So, thank you very much. I'm not going to say anymore. Everybody has said most of it, but I'm here, and I want to reiterate, to terminate any contact with ICE or to not renew the contract with that terrorist organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos Montez Ponce. Then Mahmoud Zaraya.
Hello. My name is Carlos Montez Ponce, and I'm a community organizer representing Sacramento Act and a resident of District 2. I'm here to bring the stories about the burdens placed on families again. Stories such as one that we actually had earlier this week, and where a member of the, a member, a community member here in Sacramento, asked us through our rapid-response hotline, through our rapid-response hotline work, if we can accompany them to their INS check-in. These are constant stories we hear in our community where, you know, residents, just because of their immigration status, are in fear to go into their check-ins, are in fear to go to the markets, are in fear to go into the basic services that Sacramento County provides. Furthermore, I want to really reiterate the distress that the residents of our community go through when they call into our hotlines, searching for their families, and then we, as the Sacramento Immigration Coalition and the Sacramento Act and all our partners, accompany them, not just in solidarity, but really accompany them and walk with their pains. These families, the families' fears are further exacerbated by the existing contract in our county, and whether our community interprets this contract as criminalizing Sacramento residents because of their immigration status. I also want to reiterate that as a community organizer and as a person of faith, our shared faith values reminds us that there is no sacredness, there is no dignity in either exploiting or being exploited. Those who come into contact with the existing sheriff's contract are deemed to face bond check-ins at ICE office, home visits and check-ins, GPS monitoring through an electronic ankle bracelet. Since neither ICE nor judges are required to consider an individual's ability to pay when settling, setting the bond, bonds are often extraordinarily high. Alternatives must always include ensuring that someone has legal representation, providing community-based support by organizations with proven experience delivering social services for immigrant communities. As a basic litmus test, alternatives must always decrease the number of people in detention. We ask you not to continue this contract. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mahmoud. Then, I apologize if I get this name wrong here. It looks like Ivy Yanag Rivera is the next speaker on Riverwood Way. Then Max Leones.
Good afternoon. My name is Mahmoud Zaraya. I work on behalf of CARE, the Council on American Asylum Relations. Every year, we go to Manzanar, which, with the Japanese-American community, to see the internment camp that was established during the Great Second War. And today, I don't see a difference with what ICE is doing. Detaining immigrants is as un-American as it gets. It completely discredits our core values of due process, and as an Elk Grove native myself, this tampers with the narrative of our diverse community. Sacramento County cannot continue to be a part of this broken and unjust system. It is only, it has only instilled fear and harm on local families. Immigrants, documented or undocumented, have always contributed to our county. Being true to Sacramento means being true to the people of Sacramento. This is Sacramento. We are one of the most diverse cities in America. Cee Chavas Plaza is a block away. To put it simply, ICE isn't welcome here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ivy Yanag Rivera on Riverwood. He's gone? Okay. Then Max Leones on F Street. Okay.
Chairperson, Chairperson of the Board and members of the Council, thank you for my ability to speak, or giving me the ability to speak. I'm here as a member of the Zapatistic Solidarity Committee. My name is Raymond Lee, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the renewal of the ICE contract. ICE is a cancer on this community and is metastasizing. It has created a climate of fear and apprehension that will only testify. Other cities refuse to work with ICE because of its inhuman and indecent treatment of detainees. We would be wise to do likewise. ICE needs to be recognized and called out for what it is, a vile and vicious instrument of racism and xenophobia. For the Chinese, this is all too familiar. The crimes committed then are the crimes repeated again today. We should not be collaborating with ICE. These brown shirts have no place in our community. Sacramento is a very special community with very special people. None of our residents should live in fear of deportation or separation. None. Thank you very much.
Susan Lee Al Rojas, I think it is. Is Susan here? On Akron Street? Okay. Al Rojas on T Street?
Hi, my name is Alrojas, and I want to thank the chair and the board for allowing this to come before you. I represent the Labor Council for Latin American Advancement, AFL-CIO. And we've been pretty active for the last 20 years in this community as that organization. I just want to remind you, as the board, that a couple of years ago, and by the way, we adamantly opposed the contract renewal for ICE. Several years ago, in the county jail, there was a murder committed by a man who attempted to kill a Mexican woman at a Home Depot. He used that hammer and slammed her head, attempting to kill her and screaming, "You Mexicans, you need to go back." Might remind you, the people that you call immigrants are not immigrants. They're original natives, people, indigenous people. That man was taken to jail. This guy was a murderer, later found to be deranged. Well, in that jail cell where they took him, was a person considered to be undocumented. He was already angry, enraged, and here your deputies with the sheriff's department, with all their bright minds, not considering who this man was, put him in the same cell with this person who didn't have documents, a Mexican young man, an indigenous, original person that came from Mexico. When he walked in, started an argument, and choked him to death with his own T-shirt. We protested and went to the board, here, some of you may not have been there, and demanded accountability as to why, in a jail, a man who is nonviolent, and you have deputy sheriffs put in that same cell, someone who is deranged and attempted to kill a Mexican woman at the Home Depot. I believe that there's accountability in this situation.
Alrojas, could you wind up your comments, please?
I'm going to close now. Just want you to remind you, remind you that we need accountability and a report, so that you, who are in this board, can understand what we're saying and why we said that. Thank you.
Sylvia Velazquez, Carlos Rodriguez, Emilio Hernandez. Okay, Sylvia Velazquez. Placido Calestro, sorry if I mispronounced that, my next position. Placido. Ross Schneider. You guys are trying to fool me, and you're all going to jump up in a minute and say, "We're all here," right? Luisa Manchaca. Luisa?
We have a statement.
Yes, we have a statement. Yeah, she was against, all these people are speaking against item four. Lilia, okay. Jennifer Van. A taker.
Yes, I'm Jennifer Van. I'm here representing NorCal Resist, which is a Northern California Economic and Social Justice Organization born out of the last election. Our organization is led by people of color and immigrants, and has been active in local and national immigrant rights. We urge the Board of Supervisors to sever its contract with ICE. The contract is immoral, the contract goes against values of our region. How can we say we are following Senate Bill 54 and the city of Sacramento's sanctuary policies when we are profiting off of detainment and allowing ICE to access our county jails? The contract makes our diverse community less safe, as local immigrant families feel less comfortable making any contact with law enforcement, even when they're victims of the crime. The reality is that very few individuals truly need to be detained by ICE. The current system has grown out of a combination of xenophobia and the profit motive. In fact, prior to the Clinton administration and the attacks on 9/11, very few immigrants were detained. Rather, individuals were released into their communities while their civil immigration proceedings moved forward in the immigration courts. Are we any safer than we were in 1990s, when only 5,000 people were in immigration detention? No, we're not. But we are pouring more and more public money into the prison industrial complex. We call on you to end the ICE contract.
Thank you. Don Thornberry. Then Alma Caraveran.
Thank you, members of the board, Chair Peters. My name is Donald Thornberry. I've been a resident of Arden Arcade, your district, Chair Peters, for more than 30 years, through faithful friends in the Unitarian Universal Society of Sacramento. Beginning this year, I wanted to establish some personal connection, better understand how undocumented people become part of our penal system. Please note that aside from attorneys, I was the first outside visitor either detainee all mentioned had. Just as a transgender woman, born in Mexico, who has lived in Southern California since age two, now in her early 30s, she was raised and working in Torrance, when she committed a crime for which she served three years in Alvin Hall State Prison. She served her time without incident and would have otherwise been eligible for parole. Instead, because of her undocumented status, she remained incarcerated for an indefinite period of time in RC3. Kenny fled violence in Guatemala and has lived in the US since 2014. He was working as a laborer in Marin and Sonoma Counties when he was arrested for riding a bicycle with a headlight that was broken, and then fleeing from the officers. When I met Kenny, he had been incarcerated for five months. He celebrated his 22nd birthday in the Rio Casumnas Detention Center. I don't presume to understand the financial arrangements between Sacramento County and the Department of Homeland Security and ICE. However, the moral and ethical dimensions are clear. Keeping these overwhelmingly poor and powerless people incarcerated and isolated is wrong, is unconscionable. Alternatives exist to keep them as productive members of our communities while their immigration status is investigated. If our federal government cannot provide moral leadership in this sphere, we in Sacramento County should refuse to cooperate. I urge a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Alma Caraveran, then Eric Caraveran. I really don't know how to pronounce this correctly. Yehayda Ramirez Sagala from Davis. I apologize if I.
Good afternoon, my name is Yehayda, a student at UC Davis, and I'm here to ask you to support our immigrant communities and to end the contract with ICE here in Sacramento. On May 31st, 2018, Roxana Hernandez, a 33-year-old, identified Honduran transgender woman, was found dead in a detention center, sparking outrage to the continuous inhumane and sadistic treatment of migrants by the immigration agents and these agencies. Roxana Hernandez died of health complications with pneumonia and HIV, as she was held in what is referred to as the Yelera, the ice box. These legalized forms of murder spark outrage and protest because it brings to light the deadly immigration policies and neoliberal policies in Central America that force migrants to flee their home and echo continuous US projects of empire. During late April of 2018, it was revealed that 1,500 unaccompanied minors were lost by the human and health services. The Department of Homeland Security was created after September 11 of 2001, and is responsible to the removal, resettlement, and detention among other legalized settler colonial projects, not as new tactics, but rather manifestations of ongoing settler colonial projects of which the US creation stems from. I am here to ask you, the board, to consider if these actions are representative of the values of our Sacramento County. By removing ourselves from working with ICE, we begin our journey to protect our immigrant communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Francisco Feria from Davis. Sandra Morales. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, my name is Sandra Morales, and I'm a resident of District 2. I'm a part of the Northern California Coalition of Undocumented Students, and I am here standing in front of you as an undocumented individual in strong opposition of the ICE contract renewal in Sacramento County. As someone without documentation, I can tell you that this contract not only dehumanizes my community, but also causes fear and terrorizes us. At this moment in time, you will all get to decide what part of history you will stand on. If you approve this budget that includes a separation of families and inhumane detentions, you will join Sheriff Scott Jones in tainting your hands with blood. You all have the decision today, and you will decide if you want to give in to the fear mongering that this current administration is feeding into, or if you will uphold the strong moral values that Sacramento County has. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen Roth Doughton.
Good afternoon, my name is David Guenrostro, and I am with the California Immigrant Youth Justice Alliance as the deportation defense coordinator. The Rio Casumnas Correctional Center needs to be shut down immediately. All the folks detained there must be liberated. Elgrove has no business profiting off and implicating itself in these condemning practices. Profiting off of human suffering is morally wrong, and that is exactly what keeping this detention facility open is doing. Being in a position where the county is depending on revenue from the system makes Sacramento complicit in ICE's agenda that has sparked public outcry across the nation. Elgrove should not be in the business of immigration detention. Just last year, we met Ugo, a father of three who was separated from his family for almost a year. Ugo was detained at RCCC and can attest to the inhumane conditions inside of the detention center. Like mentioned, for my comrades, waiting six months to be granted any medical assistance, being wakened up at different hours of the night for loud counting sessions, it's clear that this detention center is made to break our community members being detained there. That's one of ICE's tactics, to continue isolating folks in detention centers. As it already is, RCCC is isolating our community, and it's nearly impossible for folks, including Ugo, who at the time was detained, for his family, his wife, to go and visit him. Immigration detention centers are unnecessary, and regardless of how much money ICE can throw at a county, nothing justifies the immorality that occurs both within the system and these detention centers. As an example, the Santa Ana City Jail ended its contract with ICE last year, resulting in the liberation of all detainees who were eligible for bond, able to be released on their own recognizance, and continue to be with their community while they fought their immigration case. There is no need to detain folks in these detention centers. The termination of the Santa Ana jail agreement to hold immigrants with ICE resulted in the release of detainees, and that is why RCCC should liberate all of its detainees.
Thank you. Julio Molma, then Efren Gutierrez. Then Alejandro Cabrera.
Good afternoon, my name is Julio Molina. I'm a DACA recipient who currently serves as a president, as a board president for a nonprofit organization, Dream Development Do, and I'm a Sacramento activist and spoken poet. I am here today to support the undocumented community as a community leader, a brother, a son, and a neighbor. We oppose detention centers due to its negative psychological toll it has in our community. Voting to renew the ICE contract is an action that dehumanizes our hard-working families and contradicts California's beliefs to support and protect its undocumented immigrants. We have long been partners with our undocumented, with our undocumented community members, and we have always been here, working and educating not just our family members, but also our youth. Right now, our organization outreach is to at-risk students and underrepresented students. I have spoken to undocumented students, DACA recipients, and DACA recipients, who have both, who have been struggling and who have been in fear, not just for themselves, but for their parents. A 13-year-old, 14-year-old in high school, in middle, in middle school, fear for their parents, fear for being separated from their family members, it is immoral, it is dehumanizing. It is not okay to put our families at risk. They belong to be, they belong together. Families belong together, just like any other American family that is here in California. We are also community members. We are not criminals, and we are not animals. We are hard-working community members, family members. We are educators, scientists, we are leaders, and we will continue to, continue to make changes in institutions, changes in education, and political, and political movements. We have been here long before the DACA recipient, long before DACA, and we will continue to be here. You see the people who are in support, who have mobilized, and who will continue to mobilize for undocumented communities, not just 800,000, but our entire 11 million until something is passed, and detention centers and ICE contracts. It demoralizes our communities, and it dehumanizes our family members.
Thank you.
Claudia Gonzalez, remember her name.
Efren Gutierrez. Then Alejandro Cabrera. Is Efren here? Are you Alejandro?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, my name is Chair and Board members. My name is Alejandro, and I'm here on behalf of Councilman Guerra, he couldn't be here today. And I'm here to support the migrant community, and instead of focusing on a lot of the conversation that, you know, the issues with the detention center and the moral issue of keeping families together, which should be primordial to this discussion, Councilmember wanted to focus on the economic argument, which there's one to be made on this particular issue. So I'm here today to urge the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to not extend their intergovernmental services agreement between the Department of Homeland Security and the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. The Sacramento region has a long history of welcoming and embracing individuals of diverse racial, ethnic, religious, and national backgrounds. Immigrants have a strong history of loyalty and positive contributions to the region and the United States of America. Today, Sacramento's diverse immigrant population has been instrumental in the local economy as it forms 22% of the workforce in the region. Most of their contributions are reflected in agricultural, manufacturing, and construction industries, where they contribute to 20% of the region's gross domestic product, or $9.3 billion to the regional economy. The economic fallout caused by the deportation of undocumented immigrants can impact the general community, deporting primary wage earners places an increased economic burden on taxpayers who will pay for public services that these new broken families will need. Undocumented immigrants compromise a substantial portion of the labor force of several key local industries. Without this workforce, often referred as essential workers, our local businesses will suffer. We urge the Sacramento County Board of Education, sorry, Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to not extend this contract with ICE and utilize jail space for serious criminals and several profiteering on the back of working families. Thank you, and have a safe day.
Thank you. Ex Lali Reyes, sorry if I didn't pronounce that correctly, on Cedar Grove. Nicole Kravitz Wertz. I called this name before, I don't know if it got mixed up or not, but Elizabeth Kim, have you returned? Okay.
Good afternoon, thank you for this time. My name is Elizabeth Kim, I'm the president of National Lawyers Guild Sacramento Chapter. We're the oldest racially integrated bar association, and our jurisdiction expands all the way to the Oregon and Nevada borders, and most of the constituents here in Sacramento County are very concerned about this particular issue, which is what brings me here today. Additionally, I am also a former immigrant and also a lecturer on human trafficking issues. And as I understand, Sacramento County is a hub, unfortunately, for human trafficking victims, which this matter also concerns. So I urge for all of you esteemed members to reject this renewal for the following three reasons. The first reason is that there's a lack of transparency, and at the very least, that's a huge problem with ICE continuing their law enforcement. This leads to abuse and a. This leads to abuse and it's more susceptible to human rights violations. As we understand, the three years of litigation that finally got us to the federal court order to get the inspection done at the Rio Casumus Detention Center revealed that they failed in the standards of care. And then we also know that a detainee tried to kill himself by jumping off a two-story balcony. That's very concerning. He was denied access to medication for his mental illness. The second reason that this needs to be rejected is that the notion that undocumented immigrants threaten public safety are absolutely false. The New York Times, the Washington Post, Gallup polls, they've all shown that there's been a surge of immigrants coming into this country at a rate of 113% since 1980. However, the crime rate has dropped to negative 36% since 1980. So we do not want this myth to keep being perpetuated in our society. And third, we have a duty, all of us, the board and our community, to uphold the protection of human rights. And this is in violation through ICE and Sacramento County is, like I said, sadly a hub for victims who are trafficked and we need to make sure that we don't renew this contract so that we can treat these individuals as humans.
Thank you, Ms. Kim.
Hi, I'm Carolina Flores and I'm here as a MSW social worker. I've been working with the county for 20 years and also continue working politically as a social worker in the Sacramento community, in the county and the city. I'm here to tell you that no one is talking about the most serious damage that you are causing by being a part of this ICE contract, participating in human acts. You see the picture of the baby in the front page of the Sacramento Bee? I see that baby being detached from the mother. It's a very clinical term called attachment disorder. You cannot separate babies from the mother because they develop an attachment disorder. This attachment disorder grows in the teenage years into a serious mental health, clinical mental health diagnosis. These same babies will grow up to be adults with serious mental health diagnoses that are irreparable. There's nothing that you can do once you've damaged these children. You are damaging these babies. Somebody turn off their phone, please. You're damaging these babies. And you're not helping them by continuing this genocide. You are part of the genocide. You know, when they had Hitler and they had these tribunals and all the people that said, "Oh, well, I was just doing what I was told." I would hate to have your names on a future tribunal of all the deaths and all the damage that was done to these babies. We will not forget who votes for the ICE contract and who votes against renewing the ICE contract. We will not forget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Gallagher is the last speaker. I have signed up if anyone else has it in mind.
Susan Gallagher, Executive Director of NorCal MHA. And I was actually here to talk about the budget, so I apologize, but I do want to stand with the folks here in opposing the ICE contract for the reasons we heard here today. My questions or my comments today were really in regard to the attachment four in the budget that you, I think, were reviewing earlier today. And it's on page 37, under the Mental Health Services Act Fund. It says, "This is a new fund created to account for the recent receipt and allocation of Mental Health Services Act revenue." And I'm just really shocked that we only now, in 2018-19, have a fund for MHSA dollars. Where were they before? And I want to refer you back to a letter I received back in 2015, July, from Sherri Heller and Ben Lamira. And it talks about, we had questions about where's the money residing? Where's the interest? Why do we have so much unspent funds when there's so many needs? And I was told, very firmly, we had a meeting, a face-to-face meeting with the auditors and everybody, that there was a restricted Mental Health Services Act fund and that's where the money is. And that they paid for things out of the general fund, but at the end of the year, they reconciled. But that there was no way that this money was commingled with other funds. And so now, I really want an answer to this question. Where was the money? What was with the money? Was it by itself or was there other funds commingled with it? And where's the interest? We still, after years and years of asking these questions, do not have answers to those questions. And so those are my questions for you today. And I just ask that, you know, we keep a real close track of this money. You can walk down the street, you see the needs.
Mr. Ferguson has a...
Thank you. My time wasn't even up yet.
Well, I was going to suggest to you that Mr. Ferguson had a response to your question.
Oh, thank you. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I think we discussed earlier, when it says new fund, it means, we didn't say that, but it means new budgeted fund. As was discussed earlier, we have always had these unbudgeted funds and the money was, as was indicated by the speaker, were reflected in the budget as revenue to the operating department. But the actual fund that received the money and where it carried over as a balance was not included in the budget. We are rectifying that by the creation of these new restricted funds. So the money always existed in a fund. There was always interest accruing to the fund. It was always reconciled at the end of the year. It was simply never budgeted and therefore never seen as part of the budget process. So part of the consequence of making this change is that now that this fund that always existed as an unbudgeted fund will be budgeted and everybody can see what money's there, how much comes in, what the balance is, and how much is carried over.
Thank you. Just late-breaking, I'm sorry, Mr. Natale had a question?
Yeah, just a comment on that. Brad, I think that was helpful and certainly Susan's been before this board on a number of occasions and has asked those questions. Is that something that you could put together in a letter? Because it's not just Susan's, there are other, obviously, mental health contractors, providers, and interested parties. That maybe, you gave that in your verbal this morning, at least some general overview. Explain it now. It's a bit, not as clear as you just explained it on page 36 of the attachment four. So I think maybe a written response that could then be provided to the community that would be helpful to everybody involved.
I'd be happy to do that, Mr. Natale.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy.
Just to put a finer point on it. So this is what we refer to commonly as trust funds?
Correct.
Okay, so what we've done this year for more than we've ever done before is shed light on this and actually, there's more transparency now than there has been in the past.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Annette Rose has returned. Now this is my last speaker that I have signed up.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. I'm a constituent in District 1 and I am speaking out today against the ICE contract, the sheriff's contract with ICE. I urge this board to vote against renewal of the contract because immigrants should be welcomed here in Sacramento and not criminalized. First, the sheriff's department should not be in the business of profiting off our detained residents. Many of these individuals have lived and contributed peacefully in this community for years, even decades, and they are part of the rich culture that is Sacramento. Whether it's a dollar or $30 million, as in the case of this particular contract, it's repugnant and immoral to allow profit off our detained immigrant residents. We cannot allow this administration's zero-tolerance policy to rip our families and our communities apart. Second, renewal of this contract cannot be made in good faith because the sheriff's department has bade and continues to make material breaches of the contract. Federal audit of the Rio Casumus Correctional Center found 49 deficiencies of the 16 federal standard units to review the facility. In fact, the facility complied with only one component. The long list of violations included, but are not limited to substandard medical care, overcrowding, contraband, use of force, denial of telephone use, denied access to legal materials, environmental health and safety, food services, and disciplinary segregation. Unfortunately, we as community members may never know the full extent of these violations because the sheriff's department unlawfully withholds records requests under the PRA. What we do know is that conditions are so abhorrent that at least one individual has attempted to jump to his death while being detained in this facility. This is a basic denial of human rights. It's unconscionable and disgraceful and this is on your watch if you renew this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last speaker I have. I am going to suggest we take a five-minute break just to loosen up a little bit and before we start board deliberations on the budget. So we're in recess for five minutes.